Good afternoon. This is Mr. Chairman of the Court of Order. We start our presentation. For my to God, who love him and earth, will be saved, need to inspire and guide all our hustles and actions, so that we may always walk in the path of justice, love and charity to one another. Help us with our prayers to do only those things that will bring, that will promote unity, happiness and prosperity of our world. Amen. Would I call again this afternoon? I hope you all are in the parliament. As I speak to you, there are four or so committees that are sitting that I would love to actually went out to one of them and rushed back again. And so was my colleagues and so those other committees. And as we progress, we are becoming nervous to join us. But not to keep you waiting. I feel to start and proceed with our procedures to make sure that you are able to hold as many as you can today. So I'll call it. Before then, let me allow my distinguished brother here to do his himself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our guests, my name is engineer Patrick. See, no boys. I represent Emon to the Senate.
Anna Senator Maida Inoson. I represent Edusa Senator Remuskic. The chair of this committee. You are welcome. Class.
Please call. Call E. Case number E.
Case number E. It's a matter between Oneye Butee, Tobian, on behalf of hardly two years ago, Tobian, John Abnashan and the Commission Board. This is the first terminal demand.
I don't think she was here. All right. Call code N S K.
I distinguish German and Nawa. The next test is to defeat Kandjona, for foreign projects and services limited. Because National Land Waterways Authority, NWA. This is a project for this matter. The petition is here.
Yeah, petition.
The respondent, NWA. Any representative, NWA. It's NWA here, National Land Waterways Authority. Number S.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Time to put myself on the book. Our fact. I. Stanislos, Nba is where. A lawyer, a professional, do solemnly affirm that evidence that I gave before this distinguished committee shall give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So have me go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ayio Akam, legal practitioner. I do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing less than the truth. So have me go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. She is Kandjona. A business man. And I do swear by God that our Kandjona do solemnly affirm that evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So have me go.
For the two gentlemen, on capacity, again.
Mr. Chairman. I am a solicitor to petition and complainant for former projects and services limited. I am in office of Professor Paul Ananaba SN. So that is the friend representing former projects and services limited and I'm single out to represent a lot of them in respect of this case.
Are you sir?
Mr. Chairman, as earlier said, a most legal practitioner do from time to time has been advising petitioners matters relating to what has brought us before a committee disagreeing. I operate on my own and I have a law firm known as Ayio J. Akam, as you see.
So your express no attorney?
Yes, my lord. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please turn off your, turn off your mic. So is Mr. Jana, those people himself is going to speak for his attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I speak to man.
Attorney.
Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our presentation is very clear. I give an overview succinctly and completely. The respondent to our petition is the National Land Waterways Authority, NWA. At about the 4th of April 2022, NWA made a publication in the Davis calling for expression of interest for identification and removal of wrecks and derelicts from Nigeria Waterways. By April 28th, a client, for more projects and services limited, expressed interest, satisfied the requirements or submitted to all the requirements for the expression. To continue with their contractual opening, NWA published as guided by Act establishing them. The Act of this National Assembly, they published calling for reactions to the public, public notice. Their Act provides for 14 days within which persons having any interest or contest over any derelict or wreck should turn in their protestation. 14 days expired, nobody emerged as a rival claimant. After the 14 days, NWA still extended the period to several which still nobody nor a claimant to the wreck. The wreck is empty rania. No, there was no rival claimant that emerged to point fingers at I or we or the wreck. Based on that, on the 2nd of February 2023, NWA issued a client a letter of hour for the contract to remove the wreck empty rania from the 300 waterways and sealed it with a duly executed wreck removal agreement, duly signed by parties. A client moved to site, but before then, NWA had to write the separately agencies that hold stake in that dealing by the Navy and some other separately agencies to allow them enter into site and begin to work. So they were properly defined. A client immediately entered into cutting on the water cutting of the wreck and other requirements for the purpose of removal of that wreck from the waterway, 300 waterway and had sunk in most 1.3 billion naira ranging from monies expended in security that we are engaged to deploy. Deployment of equipment used in the cutting, payment of laborers hired and allied markets. While a client were in the work duty free out marginal commitment, a stop work order was issued to on a client on the 25th of July 2023. The basis of claim by NWA for each one of that stop order is that a rival claimant or a third party had emerged lenient claim of ownership to the wreck empty rania. A client obediently stopped and complied with that stop work order. However, after lapse of, our expense of time, a client wrote to NWA to reconsider the contract under the effect of the stop work order. That was on 29th of August 2023. NWA did nothing, did not respond and did not do anything to me to get the effect of the stop work order and then with interest on the contract. So a client were pushed to writing the House of Representatives Committee on Public Petitions. That led to a client and NWA being summoned. They were summoned and the parties ventilated their issues. A form ventilation of the issues by both NWA and a client before the Committee on Public Petitions of the House of Representatives. A clients were issued a letter to return back to site. That was on 17th of October 2023. By November 2023, a client went for site inspection and met confrontation by combined forces of talks who claimed that they were working for a named person. A clients employees were beaten, harassed, billboard and signpost and other materials were left hoisted on site for the purpose of that war, were destroyed. In all these things that happened, NWA failed to stand their feet to protect a client. Contrary to what is spelled out, protection and engagement of the condition of the environment are spelled out in the wreck removal agreement. They failed to satisfy that obligation and shield a client from being maligned further. Sir, along that line, there were two instances omitted. The first one heard on the 9th of January 2024 this year and then that date of March 2024. The meetings involved the first one, the commander of Nigeria Navy, who were, and then a joint security meeting involving the correctional service, marine police, United. The parties were instructed on order to provide documents relating to either the contract as for performer, a client, or ownership with respect to the third party. They did not provide, the third party did not provide any ownership documents to the wreck. As time passed by, sir, a second stop work order was issued on a client and then followed up by a spurious stop work order or disturbance order again on May 8th this year 2024. On that May 8th, it was some then devil looking talks that were hired to command the stop, the workers on site. Immediately after that, a client didn't afford it. Then I engaged our office. That was the point we came in, Professor Paul, C. Ananaba SN and Co. Was engaged and wrote on the 13th of May 2024 complaining to NWA all that we have encountered on the letter of invitation for that meeting. That was on July 18th 2024. Out was that meeting. Nothing came out of that meeting than there were three of a surprise telling us this is the, the claimant. Who sugar and compassed them, settled them. And we said, we cannot do that. Somebody will not just come from nowhere, jump into the space and begin to leak them on the substance or the subject of our client's contract, which is the wreck. NWA told the third party claimant to provide documents and ownership again over the wreck and they failed to provide. From that July 18th to date, NWA has not done anything to either call us back. Or to cushion the fact that the failure to consummate the contract has had on our client, while doing a letter of correspondence to certain authorities. But we felt apart from that, this is this shown establishing them by the Act 47 of 2004 that we can get justice and get justice from this committee of the National Assembly. It wanted us writing on petitioning on September 10th 2024. We submitted all the copies required of us and the committee wrote us to appear before it on 30th October. We were here, sir. NWA sent a hiring official from Lagos who came and when he was confronted as in asking him to react to our appearance that day. He said he was not told what he was coming, he said that he had invitation to come and it was so shocked, the notice given by NWA, his office. And then that he came straight to this place. He didn't get the local job or any other of their offices. The chairman presiding on the 38th, the president of the 38th of October, Madali Mosley allowed an extended time for them to satisfy the requirement of producing the number of copies of their reaction to a petition or complaint. And one, because I wanted to foreclose them on that date. But by the granularity of the president officer, the chairman of the committee that they they were allowed and were expected that they would have responded or replied to our petition. To date, Mr. Chairman, we've not seen any response. They have not joined issues with us. And the letter comes for the meeting of today says, if they have any defense or evidence of non-breach, for us, I said that have breached the contract and get that with them. So if there's any evidence of non-breach, then they should turn in apart from requiring them to provide copies in reaction to our petition. They have not brought such documents.
All right, that's, that's procedure.
Thank you.
Yeah, allow my, please turn off your mic. Yeah, now, the mic. My distinguished brother here to introduce himself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Senator Benz in Friday Congo from Bahia, sir. Central Senator at District. Thank you very much.
Now, let me come back to you.
Yes, sir.
What's the contract sum of this? What's the contract sum of this contract?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if I can answer that question.
Well, you said the contract was the contract sum.
Okay, and that contract does not have any, any value attached. Look at what the contract is.
What, what is it?
NWA called us to that experience, to that publication, which will respond then as, as well. And there was this empty rania at 300 waterways that from records we have seen that that wreck has been dead for over 15 years. NWA asked us to go and remove it. But that treatment was on what they called no cure, no pay basis.
No wages paid. No work, no, no work, no pay.
So that means we are not involving our money. If you have the resources to go and do it, go and do it. When you remove it, whatever you sell, scrap it, whatever you get out of it, that is where you get your money from. Divide it into 34 parts, take one part, give us one part and then another part, let it cover your costs. And NWA told us that it is based on NWA Act. I'm not a lawyer, he just quoted the NWA Act. And we looked at it and waited to it. Just also.
So how much, how much is expected on this amount?
If we, I cannot really report any amount as far as to this. Sir, we, we, what we stated is documented and we said our letters.
One, I have one question.
Yes, yes, that's our petition for what we spent.
I, I remember this case very well and you're not supposed to appear today because the more representative that came saying was not prepared, wasn't sure of what the case was about. And then join them to come, to come today. I would be impressed by your superiors of why they are coming here to answer questions that we may have furthered. But of note is that this case was already decided before at the house of representative, right?
Yes, sir.
And then upon that intervention, you went back to work, right?
Yes, sir.
And then you go back to work and you were resisted again.
Very well.
They said there's a top party. This top party is it, another party that gave the contract to a what?
The first stop work order that he referred to, that was on July. They said the reason for the stop work is to enable them verify an ownership claim on the wreck.
Allow us, ownership on the wreck.
Yes, there was ownership claim, that's what they told us.
Very well. Some companies say they own the wreck.
Renotex Limited.
Service on the wreck.
Yes.
That's under the water.
Yes, sir.
That is under the water for hours.
Very well. Renotex is in there.
A wreck from record that can be there over 15 years.
10 years.
A wreck, not vessel, a wreck. Confirmed wreck. Somebody came up, were wondering whether this contention was there before they gave us. They go ahead. Asked us to start.
This company is what company, what is it called?
Renotex, R-E-N-O-T-E-C-S, Renotex Limited.
Meanwhile, sorry. The Renotex that came later was not in the process that it was the time we went to the meeting on the 13th of July. That had brought somebody and said his name is.
So Renotex has any, any submission of, let me start.
Sorry, sir.
Ren, Renotex.
Well, they had.
Do they have any submission in any, any letter or anything?
They have not brought any document neither to NWA nor to us nor even, even though they are part of a war toward India now. So we were not seeing any document from them in all the bases were appeared before NWA and they submit the cases.
Is that the one, empty rania?
Yes, empty rania.
The wreck is for empty rania.
That's the, that's the Renotex?
No, no, empty rania is in there.
That is the wreck, the wreck.
Oh, that was the wreck, yes. Let me, let me verify a point, sir.
Please, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, yes, I can. All right. This, this Renotex, who has the address? Who has the address?
Sir, this is a body they just claimed exists.
Well, that's, 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 that's what it is, but who knows half a hundred to that?
But to tell you true, we don't have the address. Then, then what I want to say is this, this is a company, a claim.
Well, we understand that. Now, I've read, I've read part of this stuff, I understand that. The question, question to me is, do we have the address? How do we reach them? I need to serve them, I need to get them to come.
So the only thing, uh maybe way we may think can reach them is through Newa. Having a problem, the law.
Alright, um, I wanted to hear this matter again from the perspective of the petition. Who is there? Who is, who is company now, or who are?
Okay, is the chairman of the, of the company.
Your company?
Yes.
The chairman of your company?
Yes.
Alright, now, like I said, we've heard this, we've heard part of it, this person you were here. And I wanted to hear it again. Unfortunately, Newa is not here. You will hear the person, they are not here now. But I will listen again to this matter. And this issue of a stock party claim to wreck that is, that is under the water for fifteen or plus years. That perhaps is the reason why Newa stopped or is worried about the contract. But we will need Newa, we will need this Renotex Limited to appear. So we are going to write to Newa. And in that letter, clerk, I listen, and in that letter, we're going to require them to notify Renotex to appear on the next sitting date. We'll write a strong letter to Newa. And if they don't respond, then we decide what to do at that point. But if we have a direct access, I mean, information on Renotex, we will be able to serve their personnel so they can come. But since we don't have any of that, um so allow Newa to convey to them and make sure they are here. Otherwise, their rights will be forfeited here, will not consider it. Alright, so allow us to adjutisate, but there's not much you can really do, we saw it's second appearance. And given the fact that Newa was here in first, like a first hearing. I don't know why they're not here now, but I'm hoping that in the next hearing we will be here. Otherwise, we'll, we'll just know what to do on this matter. By now, how do you substantiate that you want me to something? Counselor, you know what I'm asking, I mean, it's enough, it's not enough to just go and did it longer. But we also want to know, how did you come about one point something? How long do you work, work? How lo- how long did you were able to do the contract before you start?
Okay, we started the contract in May, again, barely two, two months into the contract.
So sometime in July?
In May twenty twenty thirteen.
Okay, so.
Only two months into the stop.
Around July, so that's what I said, so in July, so you already accrued about one point something.
Yes.
That's why I'm asking what?
When, when we, when they stopped us after two months. So they ran, the stock work lasted the November. It was only a declaration of the Newa that said that they ran, called us back. We went back to site in December, only to find out that uh people have taken over the site. And there was nowhere to enter.
I know, so what it says is that you only worked for two months.
We, we worked, we worked for two months. When we have additions.
So I don't, I, I don't, I'm not that person that does something else. You said you worked for two months.
When they left, they left the house of reps and went back, they resumed work again.
For how long?
We, we resumed work in January and in February. And then worked for some weeks into March before.
So another two months, so two months, no, two months, about four months you worked, right? Cumulated, and for those two months, you are, you are set as your, your debt accumulated to one point something bigger, right? Alright, so this one we're gonna, uh we're gonna adjut this matter for two reasons. One, to allow um Newa to appear in their defense. And to allow, um, Renotex to also appear with their claims. So that we can get to the bottom of this matter, alright? So the clerk of the committee is going to communicate to you when it's going to be the next hearing. Before then, the letter is going to be sent to Newa. Uh, through them to Renotex for the, for the appearance in the next sitting date. And that will be the addition of this matter.
Mr. Chairman, the next basis between the stars, Kenneth, America, who is personnel escort promotion and house, who is first person of the man. Mr. America is here, Mr. America. Personnel escort promotion council, he's here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members and my colleagues here, please. My name are, are Mr. Andrew of the family. Who somebody I think that the alien had to give before this committee, that did truth. The whole is not only for it, it's so helpful.
Good afternoon, distinguished chairman. My name is Festus Alikab. I am a lawyer. And then the SLA to distinguish in a network. The petition is one of our constituents, that is why I create.
Why you don't give evidence?
No, 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 not really, I'm lying.
So you still don't listen, alright, thank you.
Good afternoon, distinguished chairman. My name is Ada Jeffery. I who solemnly I shall give before this distinguished committee, shall be the truth. The whole truth and nothing what we do. So that is because.
What is the address? Who, who, what is it? Sir, who do you represent?
I represent Nigerian escort promotion council, sir. Uh, yes, yeah, from Nigeria, escort promotion council.
Who do you represent? It's my son, sir. Is he gonna give evidence?
There's no good question.
Have you, have you talked?
Yes.
Yes. Have you taken, have you, have you talked? Okay, madam. Madam, you should have talked there. So there have been a lot of.
In the honor of the distinguished chairman, I freely shall agree. Who solemnly affirm that the elders are shall give more distinguished parties shall be the truth, the old truth and nothing but the truth. So have we got?
Thank you. So, sir, what is your position with the promotion council?
Yes. Okay. Yes, sir, distinguished chairman. I'm from Nigerian escort promotion council. I was a dispatcher that requested the record of mail last night. I was here last night and I asked me to come to it.
Okay, then, yes, sir. Uh, madam, what's your position with, uh, promotion council?
I'm an assistant director with human resources department. I'm in the escort promotion council.
Okay, so you are familiar with this case, right?
Yes.
I don't want to waste anybody's time, I remember they, we discussed this other as a statement. The other one would care. And the dispatcher would ask to come with what again?
Yes, sir, my distinguished chairman, you asked me to come with the record of twenty ten. Last I was here with the record of twenty eighteen.
Yes.
And with me, I pass the evidence down to your table, sir.
Do you have it there?
Yes.
clerk, do you have that dispatch? So this, 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 this one of the twelve indicates those who came in?
They are in from email.
They are in from email?
Yes, mutation, of which he requested for the evidence of, of the mutation on towards there.
Alright. Um. Is that Kenneth, sir? There's nothing indicate, there's in, that was a sudden indicate that someone else brought the mail.
Sir, let me explain something.
Yes.
Uh, we work together.
Use your mind.
Yes, we work together for, and when I need, let me, let me.
You, you work together, no, who, who heard of that story?
Yes, we work together. That was the time of this was obstruction.
Okay, hold on, sir, what's that?
I was given a near assistance. That's when I was asked to work for you. I understand this to assist staff when it's not there. When you were not around assisting, yes, I have been there for me that.
So, hold on, hold on. Okay, bring, bring that, let me see.
I don't have it there, this is the real matter. They are you to a near assistance, man. You were at my assistance, I mean, I'm here, yes. I work when you work, I never want to start by assisting. Uh, our director was, she's took the papers.
You are assisting.
I mean, assistance is, maybe I've seen the officer give us one.
So, hold on, sit down, sit down, sit down.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you a different question. What grade level are you on?
Sir?
What grade level are you on?
Um, I'm level nine.
Sir, what grade level are you on?
I was grade level seven.
So you are telling me that the committee asked you grade level nine to work as a grade level seven?
This, no, it was, they started when the office was structured, when they were done.
I know, a structure, hold on, serious.
They have all changed keys.
Restructure, hold on. Restructure, hold on, structure.
Yes, sir.
Are you telling this committee?
Yes, sir.
That the promotion council asked a grade level nine to go and help a grade level seven who is a mail dispatcher? So there's no answer, is it yes or no?
It's yes, I'm not like the desire, I should, I'm not a director, I thought was desire to assist him. When you refuse, they give you grade. They have not changed you, they said by your system, what is not, it's, it was only one dispatcher. Nobody again to work with him. So we stayed in this office, that when they gave me.
So how long, how long, how long did you assist him?
Assisting for the period I was there.
How long, one year, two years, three years?
It's more than, I think it should be. It started at the date, it's in that day, that was when the result of, that was, that was when the grade been.
How many years, zero to two, three years?
Three years, sir, you know, sir, it was when, if you remember when the lawyer was saying, when they asked me, I was, I was my share to buy this. So they asked me to buy, so I refused, they gave me grade for that. You know, so the lawyer sent it here.
I, I, I'm going, I'm, I'm, there's a process, I know that I'm going. All this one you are saying is a distraction, man, not asking by this. I'm asking by this, what's up? Now, the person I'm asking is this.
Yes, sir.
How long did you assist him? Was it for one year, two years, approximately?
It's more than one year, sir.
So about two years, would you say about two years?
It should be up to. Can say, should be up to ten years, I'm assisting.
Ten years?
It's up to ten years, I'm assisting.
So.
That's when this office was.
Hold on.
The date of this, the receipt of this coffee, that was when I assisted him, I was assisting him.
So for ten years?
I'm assisting, I'm assisting, but they didn't change, because nobody to take over the idea, they didn't employ anybody, just of recent. They employ somebody to, and then they change it from dispatcher rat to.
So, so for ten years, you assisted him to dispatch mails?
Yes, but it's like, they, all they use, they usually use car, car, I don't used to use motorcycle, they use car.
No, use car?
Uh, yes, the driver was used car to compare me to the place, yes, I don't use, use cyclist. That's the respect they give to me, I don't use car. I use, I don't use a motorcycle, but I don't know how to, they use car to compare me to dispatch letters.
To what far letters?
Yes, and that's what they, I've here every time.
So when you go to the dispatch letters?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do, do this sign for it?
Sir?
Do this sign for it, so you bring letters to my office?
Yes, sir.
You give me the letter to ask sign that I receive the letter?
They, they, they.
To ask sign that I receive the letter?
The complimentary, they sign the complimentary.
Well, okay, the complimentary.
Yes, sir. They, 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 it's two, they are in standard, you know, they are, they are complimentary, they are, they sign it.
That they received it.
Yes, even they were sent to us training.
So, hold on, I'm glad for what you bring back to the, to your office.
Yes, sir.
Who is the direct supervisor?
Then it was a vestige where.
So he supervised you as the dispatch rider?
Sir, what they gave is an expulsion, and you know this is a very special of your spare, because there's, 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 for the, for the, the.
I, I understand, so he, he supervised you?
Yes.
As the dispatch rider, as a mail dispatcher?
My major job is a technical work, that's what I do, but this, this was.
Okay, then, so they will schedule you for.
Yes, many times it's not around, I work for him, that's what they said that you do.
And how many times, how many times would you say he wasn't at work in a week? Approximately? Approximately?
At times, mostly, they didn't usually give me leave for one month. At times when he's sick, he will not come to work, I'll travel for him. He knows what's right, they said us training twice, both of us, you know, many times. But we work together, I would have that, there's no reason for me to lie, you're saying what.
The last time, the last time he was here. I asked him a question. Does, you see a dispatcher that takes letters out? Or someone who receives letters, comes to the office? I, I know I asked him, I know what I asked, I asked him. So I'm not asking you, I'm telling you what I asked him.
Yes, sir.
And he told me that he doesn't receive letters. That he goes to a different office. Upstairs, second floor, wherever floor he said, and remember that vividly, hold on. That his own is to take mails out.
Yes, sir.
Hmm? So when you say you assisted him, is it to take mail out or to receive mails? But he never received mails.
Sir, sir, he will take this mail out. And then mails will receive. We receive mails, because, he receive mails, I can't say it honestly, he receive mails at times, receive mails. Maybe receive, also receive, but at times when the, the office close.
So what you receive, what you receive?
For them.
What do you do with the mail when you receive it?
At times he receive, he give it to the, to the owners.
You just go to.
Uh, just go to.
Is there any, is there any, any danger anywhere, you might put that the mail like this came?
The one that, the one that came, usually from this for the, especially for the staff, sorry. But when the other office is closed, the big office, usually receive mail for them. But they are mad at that, and I will now call you, collect the letter.
All right, turn off, that's okay, turn off your mind. Sir, sir, let me ask you again. Your official duty is as a mail dispatcher?
Yes, sir.
Do you receive mails?
No, sir, I don't receive mail. In our organization, every staff has his or her schedule, duty, which you have. As a dispatch rider, I receive, I do, I don't take official mails to governmental organization and non-governmental organization, other private sector to dispatch. In the case where they have a conference or meeting, it is my duty to excrete all the data. And I will bring the evidence that it had been dispatched to my studio. We see why, though. If mail is coming to our organization, we are receiving clerk at the executive director's office. Of which he or she will receive, as you can see in this record. This mail was brought to this organization on the fifth of July, twenty eighteen, and it is documented here. So everyone, like my dispatch book, I have my dispatch book. If I take mail to national assembly, there will stamp it received, I will tell me back. That, that's why they, they stamp, receive, I will still document it in my documentary record in my office, that is my schedule, sir. Thank you, my distinguished.
Okay, he said he was, he said he was assisting you. Was there such assistance?
My distinguished chairman, we share office together, he's a technician, as you have already asked it. Based on the oath I take at another, I will tell the truth. That is what I do, I'm the dispatcher.
So did he accidentally assist you?
I know, Kenneth, he's a technician.
I know, I'm, 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 I'm a little bit of it. So here, I tell you to assist you to dispatch letter, receive letter?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, uh, madam. So you're in line with me?
Yes.
Oh, you didn't like to hate us about this, this patch of mail?
As my colleagues, as right wing. And my here is what promotion council, they are the charity of beauty for each of our staff. Kenneth, he was employed as a technician, he worked with electrical, technical work. When Mr. Frywell was employed as a dispatcher. So any mails that goes out of the office, he will dispatch. What any mail that comes in, could be received at the office of the executive director and to be well documented, reportedly to the office of the director, to the executive director for action.
So he's saying that he received mails on behalf of, of the promotion council? Is that possible?
That has never been his decision.
Yeah, well, so officially, unofficially, I do aware that he did that, you know?
That's what.
That he received mails on behalf of promotion council?
No, sir. I'm not, I'm not aware that he received mails on behalf of the council.
So because of all this matter, the reason why we're asking that, asking for white mail, who receives mails or dispatch mail? Was because of a mysterious email that was sent to the office of the director, who director?
Executive director.
To the executive director.
That mail came.
How did it come?
That was what brought the problem. Um, it was actually suspected that Kenneth engineered the document and he brought it to the office for dispatch. So they started investigating it. Which he said he didn't know anything about it. But with all indication, it was actually confirmed that this mail was engineered by him. But he was explained, he was of the opinion that he only directed, because he, he only had the person that brought him the mail to sub, to submit it at the office of the ED. That he, he was in the engineering of that mail and didn't know anything about it. And that, that mail was actually one of the problem he had with the council. So it has to be investigated. And it was actually concluded that there wasn't anybody that brought this mail to the council apart from Kenneth.
Uh, Mr. Kenneth? Do you know what she said?
Yes, sir. So I did my thing?
No, 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 that's fine, um. She said that it was investigated and suspected that you are the one who, who, uh, brought the mail, but you said you didn't get it. So, and I remember when you said that day, or correct me if I'm wrong, that you, the dispatcher came, or the person who brought the mail came, and you took the person to where to deliver the mail, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what you said, I'm trying to remember, shouldn't have forgotten. Okay. But you also said that you also received mails. Because, hold on, hold on. Now, you, 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 you say you receive mails.
Yes, sir.
Receive email, so if I come with the mail, you receive it from me? And then you now go and deliver it, right? That's what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on this particular case, the mail came, you didn't receive it. You directed him to where to take it?
The, this one is going to the chief executive director, and he not directing. But they are, they.
Before them, so, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Somebody was.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
So you now directed him?
Uh, somebody was, you explain, sir.
No, no, I want to, I want to be clear, I want to, I want to keep that to yourself, and that, here yourself, here yourself. So the person came, you didn't receive it as you normally do. Rather, you directed him?
This, this one is not the one, this one, the one who receive is from the one, to the staff. Not to the chief executive. But at times you receive when the office, at times, when the, when the, the person working there was a, a, a copper. Once they, they gave the family a staff. So when the copper, when the copper was not there, receive letter. At times when they need post copper, at times receive letter for them, and that. There's a letter, there are these submissions, I'm not looking for. These submissions and submissions, I want to show you the letter that you want signed, that you receive. It's about for that, these submissions, that is, yes.
So the person I asked, I'll ask you, there may be, there may be one. So, normally, you, you assisting this side?
Yes, sir.
So if you are going to dispatch, then you give me a car, go and dispatch it?
Yes, sir.
Because you don't know how to ride motorcycle. And when mail comes, you assisted him, you receive the mail and then take it to where it belongs to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So those letter receives, sir, are files from the staff files, you receive?
Hold on.
Received staff, I have seen their letter, promoted, other, other of the letters.
Hold on. So on this particular instance, the mail came.
Yes, sir.
You didn't receive it. Hopefully, the person who brought the mail doesn't work with the promotion council.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So you didn't receive it as you normally do. Rather, you directed him to where the mail should go, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, are you so sure that that's what you're telling me? Now, the main issue, this, this is just a, how would I say this? This is, this is something trying to be cloud the main issue. So I'm not, this one is, I'm not clear, this one, like. The main issue is why you're tampering, all right?
Yes, sir.
Why would you tamper that? Tell me.
Sir?
Tell me, why you tamper that?
But, but, I don't really know, I'm, 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 I'm not really reasonable. Uh, this, I don't believe you, because I didn't do anything bad.
How many, how many people were, how many, how many of you?
It's complaining to that, we are, we are four people, they were having look, we are about thirty five, and they said they wrote down those letters. None of them was tampered with. Some group of petition that time, I don't know the kind of petition, and they, they had them to ask apology, and they apologized. And they, about four of them refused, five of them refused to apologize. Now what this man does, because I don't know whether if I expect a way to, to tammy my, and he clean my mouth, those, those four. They refused to apologize to chief executive, so that he can quickly taminate my bank, that following this process. I don't know what he did.
How long did you work there?
About eighteen years.
How long, when we talk?
Sir?
How long, how long we go with it?
This, oh, the, 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 eighteen. That's, that's, that's easier.
All right, um.
Sorry, Frywell?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth is saying that he was terminated without the process. I want to bring it to, I want to remind him that he was buried. He appeared before the senior staff committee. And senior staff committee has to recommend his, his appointment for termination. So I want to actually say that all the process was undone before this appointment was terminated.
What, what do you mean, sir? Because I will not give.
Nobody asked you to talk?
Okay, sir. Sorry, sir.
Turn off your mind. It's our Kenneth.
Uh?
No. We're doing well. The reason why all of this came up, that's a, that's a, because I can, and I, I, I can, and, I mean, uh, your professional body. Where you complain that that those I can and I can, were treated differently?
Yes, sir.
And then you, some other persons, a petition was written on behalf, either you or two other persons, or someone with a petition on behalf of you and three other persons to complain that you were unjustly treated and that I can and I can should be treated equally or not differently. And then, Nigeria, as promotion council also now said that in that, you made first claims against that. And so they set up, they set up, um, a committee or such to terminate that. And the committee now found you guilty. And a committee of termination. You say you worked there for how long?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years. Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Admin, right?
Yes, sir.
How many careers, judges, in Nigeria?
There are more than four.
More than?
Four careers.
Can you speak to them, what are the careers about?
There are cases of writing directly, writing petition directly to the head of service, to the national assembly, to presidency. So, in, in civil service, there are procedures of writing petition. There seems all those procedures are not followed. You expand it of all, of writing. Then apart from that, this big issue of the letter that was suspected of, in my letter for him, complaining that he wasn't giving opportunity to travel for international assignments with other people's mail. That one too, because he didn't come from outside. They look at it that he was filed documents saying that a lawyer wrote on his behalf, on, on behalf of the petitioners. But that lawyer, the, there was no evidence where the chamber of that lawyer was located. So they now be looking at it as if the officer served in that organization for like eighteen years. And yet, he still worked against the rules of regulation. The service may not longer be, that is why this.
Does that tell you about this case ever take you to court?
Sir?
Was this case ever taken to court? Did you ever file, did you ever go to court on this matter?
Yes, sir, I don't go to court.
Did you consult the case, when you took what case? Did you go to court?
No, sir, I didn't go to court, sir.
Now, my difficulty is a very, uh, this difficulty here. This man has worked for you for eighteen years, you said? Eighteen years?
Eighteen years, sir.
Eighteen years? And the only infraction that in this record, that the infraction of creating rules or going above the management to, of like, instead of bringing the complaint directly to, through, through the civil service procedure, to where it's paid. And this letter that you, that allegedly a monitor from him that has drawn on the issue of dispatcher, non-dispatcher, and you being asked at the midnight to go and assist themselves, I, I, that's over my head, I can't understand that. How that works, as you said, I don't believe that, but you've said so. So the issue of veracity is. So the issue of veracity is weighing in my mind itself. But I'm also looking at 18 years of service. It just... They try to go like that. Don't we think that that is a little too harsh?
Tell me, sir, the... The fact remains that these 18 years of service with the council, they were just trying to manage you. And they look at it that they manage you. It no longer be...
Managing... Managing how?
Like, what's on these cases, sir? Even when the lawyer came the other time, he mentioned that Kenneth as the... He's always aggressive. Even...
Yeah, but there's... There's no such thing.
Was there an offense committed?
No, that's not the story of this man, yeah, of such.
No, you were saying that 18 years of service, he just told you to... And I was trying to explain that. The people that... The... The people that directly...
What were the offenses he was committing that he were managing him?
That's what I'm saying, sir.
Yes.
That even naturally, Kenneth is aggressive.
Yes.
Then officially, when it comes to official matter,
Yeah.
There are procedures of duties in service which he never followed. He would just want his own complaint to prevail, without looking at...
So you were... You were looking for an avenue to throw him out?
Sir, if you... If you remember, sir, I said his case was presented to the senior staff committee. And the senior staff committee of the council comprised of the directors, representative of the ministry, representative of the head of service. If you look at the letters in the roadside, you will see, uh, reply, replies from what the office of head of service in most of his cases, that these things, we don't... We can't do it the way you want, but you never want to listen. So, inasmuch, he would not want to listen to advice. He wants it to be done in this way. They said they are not condoning it again. That was the reason why he's...
Is there a manual... Is there a manual, um, from, uh, of, uh, the Promotion Council of this assistance?
We focus strictly that of the head of service.
So is actually the head of service, um, rules and regulations, which says that if someone is aggressive or you someone...
There's too many possibilities.
That it has...
Ordinarily in service, sir, if one has committed more than three offenses on the different or similar this day and he was queried, you are the one, you are continuing to... You know? They look at it that he's still on there and service cannot longer...
So, apart from termination, what other... What... What other, um, punishment can someone, can be metted out of someone who commits this infraction?
Depends on the... Like this type of, uh... It depends on the offenses, sir.
But this seems to be the... It's like the...
Yes, sir.
This in... In... This like the worst. That's the most you can give him, right?
No, they, uh, after... Apart from termination of appointment, they used to dismiss officer. If they look at it that...
Termination, appointment, dismissal are not the same, sir?
They are not the same, sir.
Okay.
In dismissal...
What is the consequence?
In dismissal, he has no... No benefit to be paid to him, no matter the level of years he has spent. But they look at these cases, uh, in... That... On the material brand, let him not be terminated. Despite that, he will get his warning and he can even move for work in another place. But in case of dismissal, he cannot work in another place and you have no attention to it.
Alright, sir. Do you mean...
Well, uh, make our attempts. That's what I...
Have you made an attempt to apply for any other, sir, any other award?
I don't know. I've... I've tried, but I don't know what to do.
Now, when you were terminated, your benefits were a little pay to you?
They don't pay, sir.
You don't pay any benefits?
They only pay me parking allowance, that very much.
What is it?
Parking allowance, they gave to me.
Parking allowance?
Yes, sir.
What's the parking allowance?
Of termination. He knows... He knows that...
Madam, what's the parking allowance?
Because the parking allowance is to enable an officer, either terminated or retired, to park and relocate to his own place.
Okay. Okay, apart from... Turn off your mic. Apart from... No, no, you... Apart from the... Apart from the parking allowance, what other allowances was in that total?
It's according to his pension, which he has to come to the office, a letter will be written to recommend him to pension his PFA. But he has served so soon years and he is entitled to collect his benefits.
And he has not done that?
He hasn't gone.
Eh?
He hasn't gone.
He hasn't done that, right?
He hasn't gone for that.
So he has not received any benefits? Apart from parking allowance? Alright, uh, this committee will go to reserve, um, our decision.
Oh, let me mildly emphasize on... You mean, the queries you saw on him were because he wrote letters to places he was not supposed to write the address to?
Directly, without reaching through his boss. But his letters coming out...
That is four queries were related, uh, were given to him in that way. Because he wrote letters to one, to who and who?
To the head of service.
To the head of service.
To National Assembly, I think. To National Assembly.
To National Assembly?
Yes, sir. I think to... To the ministry.
To the ministry.
I think presidency too.
Sir, did you write letters to these places?
Sir?
Be honest with us. Listen.
Yeah.
You see my... I've told you... Hold on, hold on, hold on. Before you ask that question. I said something just now that I have difficulty. Difficulty is your veracity.
Yes, sir.
It is... I don't have... I have very short views for people who are not honest.
Yes, sir.
Very short views. I try to... I'm a lawyer over 30 years. And when you... As I'm speaking, I'm listening to you. I'm also listening to what you're not saying.
Yes, sir.
So please, open. Just tell us. We're going to help you. I want to help you. The eyes open. Don't... Don't be clouding anything here. So tell me, or tell the committee, did you write a letter to head of service? Yes or no? Yes or no?
Yes, yes.
Did you write a letter to the presidency? Yes or no?
Presidency. No, never wrote a letter to the presidency.
Did you write a letter to National Assembly? Yes or no? To who in National Assembly? Is it to your presidency?
Yep.
Is it... Is it the petition they're talking about or...
The petition, yes. So, I have issues about that. They... They've contacted me seven times without promoting. They say nobody to say my promotion account. And, uh, several times, I'm... They tried to say that I complained to the house representative and I look at all that.
Who... Who has represented it?
I compared to them. It was, I think it was, uh, Mr. Andrew Mery with that.
That represents your position as president. You identified that. So that's not one of them. Which... Which other one did you write, um...
To the ministry?
To the ministry.
I didn't do that for that.
Alright, okay. Sorry, sir.
Go on.
Um... Did you actually attended to the issues that erased in the level for non-promotion and that all of them? Did you speak to the substance?
Yes, sir. If you look at the reply from the head of service concerning the pressure on the... They specify what is supposed to be required. He needs to obtain before he can enjoy what he has received. Therefore, the promotions, as it said, that in... They said like seven years, that is not true. There was a year that actually he was to be promoted. But that... They're supposed to have written a letter to them and that works so that they might come and set it up for him. Then because that is not the... The apologize and the next promotion will come, which will not be problem. He accepted the promotion. That is why it wasn't...
So you... You didn't pass? Right? You didn't pass?
Yes, sir.
Alright, like I said, I've... We are going to reserve our decision. We'll make our decision on both of you, to both parties, what the committee thinks about this matter. And to be communicated to to you through the secretary. Alright? And that will be the... And for this matter, the decision will be communicated to you, right? That will be the decision of this committee.
I'm your representative. Took the master security plan and advanced the connection. Amaya. The partner, Amaya.
That the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God. Alright, sir, um... For the petition, that Aruchu Gupur Obona? Yes. What is her name?
My name is Johnson Byers Ayar, Esquire.
Okay. So, Aruchu Gupur Obona is also a lawyer?
Yes.
Okay. That's the person you represent?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, who the master security plan is there, yeah?
Amaya.
This is what I hear. Several time both parties came. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Third... Third time, both parties came, but the other party was not prepared.
Yes.
And this is fourth time. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Member of the committee. I still say that I'm Johnson Byers Ayar Esquire representing the petition. Um, I seek to possibly take a date. My little friend actually this, uh, requested that that we should have taken it.
Who's your little friend? That's for... For master security? Don't... Don't meet the petition. Okay. The petition, not as a Obona. Pop.
It'd be sometimes in January for that year.
Mine is in one. Fine. It's not your... Is that why, sir?
Yes.
But I would grant it because the... I would be master security. It's not yet either.
Yes.
But I would grant it, but... But see, we have a lot of cases wrote here. And so, some cases like this, we want to quickly, you know, dispatch, dispatch, take out this. So I will join you, please, to let your client know that the next day that he's asking for, sometime January. Alright? That will be new January or towards the end of January. Because... As soon as it's going to be closed by one anyway. Um, so please appear in this, um, next year of date.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, and so please, uh, also understand that, uh, uh, this will be master security plan. You know that you were absent for hearing today and we hope that you're not absent in next time because we will make a decision about it. That's the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And so that will be the decision of this committee.
Yes.
Next cases. Case between Matthew and the... Yes, sir.
Adela, sir.
Yes, yes. Yes, sir. I'm with Fidelis Amori. Amori. Versus National Guard. Yes, I'm with him on the mark.
You're with us here on the mark, sir? This is Engler, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Should I start, please? Sharan and Paro, we got a good one. Hi, Matthew, Tedalise. Do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mr. Amora. Those solemnly affirmed as the evidence shall be given before this distinguished committee shall be truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Most distinguished, the chairman and member, my name is Otumbalari Michon. I do solemnly affirm that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Good evening, distinguished chairman and member. My name is Feriza Asupo. I, Feriza Asupo, do solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Good evening, House Chairman and Member of the committee. I am Dr. Blessing Kupo. Hi, Dr. Blessing Kupo, do solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Alright, um, sir, who do you, who do you represent?
I'm I'm a representative of the National Guard of Independence.
You are medical doctor?
Yes, sir.
You are the president of N D A A?
Yes, sir.
Madam, who do you represent?
I am the director of prostitution and abuse services, N D A A.
Sir. Thank you, sir. Distinguished chairman. My name is Dr. Balari Umechon. I used to be the director of N D A A. But now I'm special advisor to the chairman. And he wrote a letter today, saying that reading this post that should please accommodate, because most importantly, I have been the special envoy in this matter to assist from the facts.
Okay. Sir, who do you represent? You, sir, yes.
Yes, I'm distinguished senator.
You have the attorney for them?
I am the counsel to the petition.
Okay, sir, you are the father?
Yes, I'm the father.
Ma'am, and that's the chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm aware.
Hi, Hilda Amoria. Solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give before the distinguished committee shall be the truth. Nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Alright, um. Counselor. I will speak for the辩方.
I'll speak for them.
Okay, please tell us all again. Meanwhile, let me, let me start with this conversation. The case was here before. And I was told at that time that the case was in court. As a result, we drew a decision about the matter, because we can't get the cases that are already in court. But I'm also told now that the case has been drawn from court. So I will speak, this matter is not between, is not before any competent court, that is the case, is that correct?
Uh, this is chairman, sir.
This is asking. Will be. No, hold on, yeah, that answer, is that correct?
Thank you, sir. No, I'm not totally correct. The criminal aspect is still in court. But, you know, and we're still before the House Committee. We were there, they asked us to go and check the eye, especially this was between Asupo. We went, they were to come back, which will reveal to you as we go on. They were to come back for the cornea expert that we brought from abroad to have a view. But I think the votes party, they decided we're not only a present.
Okay. So someone to my place?
Yes.
Yes, is the case before the competent court?
The case is not in court. We have since withdrawn. And we, we furnished this committee with copy of the withdrawal, even the arrangement of order.
Okay. So tell us all again.
Yes. Before this committee, this was later. We have a petition dated the eighteen day of July twenty twenty-three. And and updated one, dated the eleven day of October twenty twenty-four. They are basically same in context. We leave of the committee, we move to adopt same as our claim before this committee.
Okay.
Together with the Anazians.
Turn on the light. Ma'am. I want to speak directly to that. Um, let me tell, tell what happened. Yeah, tell them, go ahead. On the. You're both direct. Something happened, your wife called you. Yes, right, no, okay. Something happened, your wife called you. Okay, so talk to your mother. Ma'am, ma'am, tell us what happened.
On the thirteenth day of July twenty twenty-three, I was inside my shop. My kids just got back from school. He just dropped them, not even much of five minutes.
Who just dropped them?
My husband just dropped them.
How old are the kids? How old are the kids?
My oldest son was two years and five months then. Then he was a year old.
How old is he now?
He's two now.
Okay.
He's two years and five months now. I was inside the shop as, I was trying to just give them some snacks I kept for them. They've not even, he has not even removed his bag. He was, he was just standing at my front when a bullet came. Just pier, um, went through his stomach. And came out from the back. Pierced through his back, busted the glass, and this child was behind him. Behind him. Went through, the, the bullet just pierced through everything, was just going round the way inside the shop. Then I heard my boy, his eyes. Something was on the floor from his eyes. So I just helped, you know, I called my husband to come back, come back. Since he hasn't, um, turned over on the other side, I should come back. That the bullet just hit my son now, uh, our son. Then he said, okay, I should just be going, I should, I should, I stood in the, I come with, I'm going to the hospital. Then I just ran downstairs with them, took a tricycle. And I went free to the hospital, and as I was driving at and the tricycle was going out of the place, she, he was driving into the
Hospital?
Into the, no, into the scene of the
Okay, shop.
Yes, as I was driving up the stairs, it was coming. Then when we got to the hospital. And I got the kids. Then I had to take my son to the theater, to such a theater. The theater had him out in eleven in the night, in the morning six. Outside, technically, it's on the kitchen, while the other boy died in the theater.
So, sorry about that. Sir, it's okay, turn on the light. Sir, so what happened?
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Then immediately, my wife called me. I just told, and I excited the men of the N D A A in front of the shop. And as I was going, I heard a gunshot. Until my wife called me that she had a gunshot outside the shop, or they were inside the shop. That the bullet just came from the road, so immediately I came to the scene. I met and some group of armed persons. Description of N D A A, N D A A. So I now want to go approach, they are just stunned, I want to go approach one of the leader. I said, ah, okay. The bullets that people fired have killed somebody. Killed my son. They didn't even listen to me, they were just saying shit, shit, God, they said they came, they were turning around. And I said, how do you expect me to shit? My wife just called me that. He saw the bullet people fired just have killed my son. And he has taken them to the hospital, they didn't go this thing. So I now brought out my phone. And I started turning the scene, there were like three vehicles. There were more than ten persons, all armed, in front of the place. So I now called the officer, I now started calling the scene, scene, they didn't listen to me, at least let me have some evidence. Before they do it, one of them just came, I said, give me that phone, if you didn't give me this phone, I will shoot you. I said, you shoot me, I will not give you the phone, so I now start dragging the phone. They were now threatening me with, God. So I now said, I won't give you the phone, immediately I saw that one of the commander now came out. He now said just whispered to one of the two of them, they now entered their vehicle. They now moved, and I was also driving. I now moved alongside with them, doing the video, and if you know, sir, that very well. There is another village over fifteen kilometers. They call that place Isela Sabah. I didn't even know where they came from. I was doing that video crying that they've killed my son, they've shoot bullet into my, they have killed my family. I now drove along with them from Asaba to Isela Sabah. When they now go to Isela Sabah, going to inside Isela Sabah, they now stopped. They now said, ah, what happened? I said, I was talking to you guys, just, people were just pushing me out and all that. My wife just called me. And I heard that one, when I, when I, when I turned. They now said, ah, it was not their fault, that they were trying to chase some of these, some guys around the people. And I said, okay. They now said, I should follow them to my, to one of their commander in Isela Sabah, I now went there. The commander now, and when we now go there, the commander now said, ah, oh. That's he's very sorry for what happened. But right now, we should be taking, we should be taking back my children. I said, they've already gone to the hospital. He now said, okay, where is the guy that fired the gun? They now brought him, said, they were now telling me, ah, see our commander. They are not together, okay, I just wanted to know where they are going, because I don't even know where they were coming from. Now, going back to the hospital, let me go and check their condition, how they are feeling. Now going down to F N C. So I, I went for the.
Where's F N C?
F N C, that medical center, Asaba. We, we now went there. Already, the two of them were taken to the theater. So with the help of other medical doctors everywhere was traveling. They were looking for blood, some people that has blood, because they said they don't need the one that has, that was, they have in their blood bank that they needed, so people were now, now for not here to do the blood, but I want to be like, oh, God, this story. At about eleven thirty or thereabout. The older one with uh, two years, two years old and five months, gave up his ghost. And he was still with him, tomorrow is supposed to be, then there was supposed to be his graduation. And he was with his gown and his bag, when the bullet penetrated his chest and came back from the back.
And he shot from the back?
From his brachial to the, uh, non-jean one. So they now said they were, then one of the commander now said he woke up. It was in the night, one of the commander now came. Before then, we have lost the older one, he now going back. I didn't see him again. Then from there, after two, three days, we went and deferred from that place to High Foundation in Los, because they said you cannot handle it in that place. We went to High Foundation in Los. And some other persons came, a lot many people came. When would I go to High Foundation? They now said, before then, there was one of that commander that was calling me, I was trying to reach out to him. He was not taking my call, and immediately I called back again. I was not told that commander that was talking to me, he was immediately transferred from that state within that week. So I was not communicating with, it was the person that was having his number. So every other person, I was not communicating with anybody. They will now go to High Foundation. They will now took my son to this one that will have, why the other one was that he used to be referred abroad for proper checkup, because according to the osteology there. They said he has a retina detachment and they, eh, eh, eh that they needed to, there's a machine that they will need to put to find out other pieces of glass and other things that were inside his eye. That kind of machine, they don't have it here. They did not give up the affair. From there, we now tried to communicate with one of the commander, even the chairman himself. At the end of the day. They now said they are going to take responsibility for taking abroad, for proper treatment, for surgery, the, 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 they said the, the, he needs. So we're not doing all that. They now promise they are going to help us. They now said we should break his document. We, I, international passport, everything, we brought it before them. Before you know it, it's one story or the other. Take, as they said, you look, take responsibility. It's one story or the other, the network is not bad, the network is good. Before you know, from one week, three weeks, or three weeks, to three months. This event that happened on the thirteenth of July. Then the chairman called me, he was not in the country. He, he now said, whenever he is back from the country, he will come and see me. What he did, what to send me, took him, he said, from his own personal pocket that I should be using in that whenever he comes back, he will come and see me. That whatever I need, they are going to prepare the document for my son to be taken to US for the surgery requested him for. They will not do any other. This event that took place on Ju, uh, July thirteenth. November second, the chairman now came. Pay me a bond of legacy, and before this time. We have been trying our, our best at all this, the only thing we were having, the only challenge we are having is for the agency to give us an assistance and take responsibility so that the little child I can be immediately taken care of. Since then, it's one story or the other, network is bad. Say your, say your whatever, whatever, every, everything, almost everything. What is it? It's a year and three months, we are still where we are. Mister, the man here, Mister beside me has come with the chairman to pay me a visit. It's the same story. Since after one year. He came to Delta State to see and told us that they are going to take my son to Dubai, since they have tried their best to see how they can take my son to the US, it's not working. When, when they told us, we did everything, since we are not seeing them, we now on our own. We proceed, we did everything, we look for the, the visa and we did everything. They now said they will give us a cover up later to take my son to the US, so that, we now, they now said we should go. We went for the interview. When they now saw the, the system, they told us, ah, no. There's no N D A A or any federal government assist them in the process of this my visa. They denied the visa. I now called the chairman again, he now said I should reapply. I now reapply, they now gave us twenty twenty-five. And I said they should help us just to help me expedite. I summon a majesty to help me expedite, so that we can take care of this little child. It's all about story, story, what is it? Sixteen months. This boy have not gotten proper treatment. Not until even four months ago. He called, he came to Delta State. He said, we are going to make all the necessary arrangements, but first of all, we should go to T U C High Foundation. That is a standard hospital that we can take care of my baby. After eight months, then we, because of the the agent in that place, when he came to do the meeting with us. I now broke out of the general, of Delta State. We now came, me and my wife are nice, we now came to Abuja. He now made the necessary arrangements for us. We now came to T U C High Foundation here to check my son's situation. The officer was there, we had to, they're all limited. Said, this case cannot be treated here. It's High Foundation, they got scared, they fear this boy. Not, we didn't end up in only High Foundation. There are other hospitals that we have gone to, a lot of them, we have them here. Just to take care of my son. T U C said they cannot, they gave us, they said, no, this, this is what High Foundation said. And this is what they are still talking about now. That my son needs special. Then after which we were able to reach out to the committee. They now invited us. We now, they now said, okay, they now came and told us that we should come to one, another just speak to again. We now, they now said, okay, they now came and told us that we should come to one, another respite again.
Sorry, sorry, thank you. Sorry, tell me. Eh, Otumba, listen, you heard, um, you heard them very well, sir. The reason why I didn't want, I think the lawyer has adopted all their claims and everything, that's, that's legal. Here is the Senate, it's, it's a different kind of court. It's for Nigerians to own their problems and see how they suffer. And if you are doing this, there's a problem here. There is a problem. And I'm making a tip because I'm a father of children, I have a two years old, I have a six years old. They've lost one child, they've lost one dead. The other one, I, to be saved, has become a problem for sixteen months? I mean, can we, can we step aside first? That we are not N D A, that we're just fathers and mothers? Can this happen to us? That for sixteen months, we are being held from one pillar to another post? Please let me hear you. Let me hear you.
Thank you, Chairman. Eh, thank you, distinguished member. Thanks for the opportunity to address your question. Um, largely, that is the story. What's, um, what's more true is the air force that were admitted. And I can understand the emotions. Once again, I agree the parents, young parents who have undergone this terrible and they are significant to this terrible experience of the box of a car that just came back for us. Distinguished, I have a paper which I have, um, stapled it on the other chairman. It's concerning this to our own side of the story. Um, like you have said, not bigger technicalities, but human to human. I have told them this, but it looks like it's a correct statement and they are actually tired of these statements. So as an agency, we work very closely with the American Embassy. The, we made efforts, we wrote in anticipation, we were so sure that this will turn their heads. So we wrote even to federal government in anticipation, asking for approval of certain amount of money to enable them travel. Unfortunately, the rules about granting visa is the rule. We wrote, we wrote foreign affairs, we wrote, eh, the American Embassy. And they replied us, the copy of which we have probably. And no, we don't, eh, eh, we don't accept top class interference in our visa regime procedure. We have our standards. So we tried to find out what was wrong, that we were not granted. And what we were told from behind is that application for visa for five, of four or five people to go and treat one person, the America will not do that. If it is the mother or the father or just two of them, they will do it. But I can understand, they have this knowledge. So we made, we made extra effort through foreign affairs. And foreign affairs wrote back, is attached to the letter that you have sent. When we, in the process of all this, we were hearing that we abandoned, we did all this, so we went back again. I was asked to go and see the secretary, see the governor. I went to see the governor, the governor set up a committee headed by the
Lord of Delta State?
Yes, sir. Headed by the S S G. The S S G intervened, he used to stay in the U S, his family will consider his system may not work, let's look for alternative. And, um, took personal interest really. In fact, they were having, eh, they were, they were meeting in his house. One Sunday afternoon, he called, he said they are here, we are sorting out this stuff. So we thought that was going to be able to take care of this matter. It didn't happen then. When there was publications all over the place that were abandoned then. We got back to the governor, as the S S G reported, we want to make progress in this matter. He says, okay, now there's going to be another mediation committee. It will be the Attorney General, eh, Honorable, eh, Attorney General of Delta State. So we met there and we resolved quite a number of things. Number one, that the issue of two billion naira will not, it will be an insult to you at the end of the day. If I give you two billion naira now, will you be able to forget the blood of your son? Let's do something that will help the one that is bleeding and that will also partly help. So we went into negotiation room outside the Attorney General's office, into his conference room. And we discussed. And so, in, in other words, eh, eh, distinguished chairman, what we, we, we were not able to resolve was not the issue of how much are you able to put down to help in the treatment of this boy. And we said, we open up to them. On our own, we can put in five million naira for, and at five million, we will gather it, because honestly, you are the custodian of our project. You will see there that this, we don't have this funds. We have written, eh, maybe has not applied up to now. So let's gather this money. We made efforts in Dubai, eh, in India, in England. And we came to the conclusion that maybe about seven hundred dollars will take care of this whole issue.
Seven hundred dollars?
Yes, seven hundred. Well, you know, just, we'll have your comments. Um, eh, distinguished, there are too much emotions that, like you have said in the other case, if you are not very careful, you get carried away and you lose it in the facts. When we got to this level, sir, eh, house of, eh, house of reps, we requested, eh, the chairman said, okay, but I even need to see the eye that I'm, I'm working on. So I can report to the speaker. That was why we went to the eye center of National Assembly. And, eh, Doctor Guwabu, who is head of the eye center, said, oh, I'm familiar with all the hospitals, the top hospitals. Will you like us to, just, I don't have the facilities to do it yet, I'm even the personnel, but I know hospitals. I mentioned three of them. And our doctor now said, please, let's try the last one, the skipper. Because we have contacted skipper and they said they have the experts to do it. They have the experts to do it. They all work together, Charai, First Foundation, Skipper. Skipper is the national guru here, one of the best. So we went there with them. After the eye was open for all of us to see, in T U C Charai, the doctor said, remove this body, it's not necessary, let air enter this boy's eye. Because give an impression that a bullet enter, it gives a father, I'm a grandfather. It gives a father.
And we objecting to this provocative narrative of, eh, eh, eh.
Let's, let's, let's.
It is a, it's a sort of punishment.
No, no, no.
You should not give medical opinion.
You get very touching when we be after this.
Excuse me. I said from the beginning that it's not a lawful. You wanted to adopt your submissions.
Somebody whose eye was bugging, they were holding it, they brought it. And by the grace of God, they were able to take care, that they can handle it. But all the, all the, accelerate, we have the universal standard. We will send this round, our experts, and get back to you in two weeks. So they got back to us in two weeks that they were ready, for fourteenth last week. Fourteenth November, we called. I asked this doctor who was to be on standby, who was there eight o'clock, three P M. On the day they were supposed to be there, they weren't there. So I asked him to call, he called. He said, I've left you with all your mystique to the almighty God. He wasn't interested in calling. This will not, it will not help our case. Our case now is your case. I've told you, we agree with you on all that you have said. This was entirely an accident. As the lawyers have left you to reach the details and I will treat a couple of cases and I know you read it. The, the effort to assist in ensuring that this innocent boy does not come up with one eye in life. We have made efforts. Yesterday, they gave us another appointment with the expert being an Arab. There would be, there was no opportunity for us to tell them that please turn off, let us finish this matter. So as I speak with you now, sir, the money had accumulated twenty million and we are still ready with that, with that proposal. But when I talked to him, he said, you know, he had already spent over twenty million already. But, you know, on our side, we have spent over twenty million. But we will not mention that, because what is twenty million to this a constant in which the family from themselves now? That was why in hospital bedside, the animal was saying, take my own money because of these long procedures. Proceed with whatever preliminary you need to do. And I have been there four times, like he said. We wouldn't ignore them, they are Nigerians. And one that would be working for Nigeria and continue to work against them. So N D L's case, like you know, sir, is, eh, is a pathetic one. Our commander who is there now got bumped in the same Delta. We have lost about three hundred officers. We, these things come with a lot of challenges.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Um, the officer, the officer that, that did the shooting?
Yes, sir.
Where is he?
Um, he's on bail, on sale. Standing trial. He's still before the court, on bail.
He, he's still a serving officer?
He's still a serving officer.
He's still a serving officer?
Yes.
Why?
Yeah, because this is an accident. For six hundred meters away from where this thing happened, nobody could have imagined the possibility of this bullet hitting the rim of the car. After the suspect had knocked down our officer, all the pictures are there, sir. Had knocked down our officer and in panic, you know that they are professionals. Only one bullet was shot, like, eh, eh, our documents show. So, sir, the officer, in all sincerity, that was the question the Attorney General asked. He said, in all sincerity, Mr. Eh, Fideres, would, would you think that that officer dressed up, carrying his weapon to go and kill your son so that we need to take his life again? He said, he doesn't, he doesn't think so. And from the story he narrated, you see, you can see that it's just an accident. Six hundred meters away, sir, in a corner that was not feasible in the, in the operations. But we cannot say that this, you know, N D L's bullet, and that was what we're making, all the efforts we're making. Because we are here not to compound this case, but to see an amicable way of attributing their pain in such a way that they don't see federal government.
Now, the bullet, the person that, eh, he was aiming at, the car, where is the car?
Yeah, it's good.
And, eh, the, the bullet hit the car?
Yeah, it hit the rim, it's from the rim that it's been protected.
So nothing happened to the person he was aiming?
Nothing.
And that the car, nothing, it's just like that?
Nothing.
Can I respond to this? Yeah, pardon.
This they have just told by the N D L official, they were pretending to hear. You know, I don't want to react in the way that, I am somewhat respectful to the committee. It is not in my character. But when terrible acts of calamity before invested on the family, as in this particular case, and the corporate are still standing and talking down on this injury to this young couple and their, and their infant children. One kid, the other one, destiny under serious threat. It is provocative at, at worst. He just gave a story and I'm very impressed from the response of the committee member. Now, you fired a shot at a car, then the bullet magically abandoned the destination and made a U-turn and it turned to kill somebody upstairs in a closed apartment. And it's, it could not tell this committee who was that victim, that suspect, that he wanted that suspect that they fired at. What happened to the car? Nothing. What happened to the driver of the car? Nothing. And they were in a convoy of three cars. The car that purportedly said a shot at was not ejected. Asaba is not a jungle. It was in the middle of town. If you know Asaba, it was Panar Road, that is the center of Asaba. Even close to Gobbe House. The three vehicles, N D L loaded with guns, could not give the vehicle a hard chase. What happened, eh, eh, suicide was that they came and they were shooting randomly. Pretending to be chasing what we don't even know, because as we say now, nobody was arrested. No, no car was shot, there was no actual gunfire between them and anybody. Apart from shooting to kill innocent people in their homes and residential areas, there was nothing to justify this calamity. In law, they said gross recklessness is equivalent to intention. If you shoot randomly, careless in the, in the crowded place, for one just cause, and people are killed. There is presumption that you want to kill them. The issue of accidents should not even arise at all. But if I fire a gun to a market place, my intention, that should be presumed, I want to kill people in the market. That was what happened here. So we are not talking of that now. We are talking of damages has occurred. And then N D L should take responsibility and pay damages. And he said twenty, two billion is the certain. Then he offered twenty million. That was in the fire. Can you reconcile that in certain contradiction? If two billion is a certain, then twenty million is a defined. Two billion cannot bring back life lost. Then by its own calculation, twenty million can do what two billion cannot do. We are before this committee, we are no longer asking for any, as any treatment for this, but we have been doing about it our way. We need damages. Two billion is what we are asking for. When that money is paid, we proceed with the procedure. They are not going to be the people who kill and also be given the opportunity to bury the victim. It is an abomination. They have spent over a year, going to two years now, playing, playing games. Taking the players round around in a, in a circle. No intention to move, to motion without movement. Even like the H R J officer, I told you, H R J. These people are playing games. At the point, they said, Delta Department offered this, eh, young couple, how much?
So ninety million.
Ninety million naira to facilitate this, of this infant child to where it was fed to in the U S. And they claimed the money was released. There was nothing like that. It was in the, in the, in the news. Blackmail has even joined the whole, eh, the whole, eh, terrible calamity. We are no longer going to continue to take this. We are before this committee to seek justice and all over the world, when it's like this occurs. You don't even, you don't even go ahead to ask for damages, it comes naturally. Tell you that N D L is negligent, it's another hollow petrol. N D L does not ride on the, on the kekana pedal. All their fleet are burning very much and we know how much they he lost cost. N D L is not poor. N D L is very, very buoyant. Any attempt to hide behind, eh, phantom poverty, to do that responsibility should not be condoned by this above's body.
All right.
I beg to sum it.
Thank you very much. Just turn off your mic. All right, um, we've heard all this. Like the righties have a concern this problem, the charge was still there. Are you saying that you are not only interested in N D L attending to the treatment of this child? Yes.
Exactly. Because a year and two months, it took us now. No, no, no real efforts. In fact, they were frustrating the trip.
It's, it's all right, it's all right. So what, what?
We want, we want damages.
Sorry, what other efforts are you now taking to ensure that he has proper treatment?
They are, they are being searched for a stage here until it's far out of the country to where the, the best facilities in Nigeria are found to. There is nothing, eh, permanent that can be done. And our intention is for we get it from, we foot our own, our own, our own, our own steps. We will rely on their own, eh, gimmicks and politics. That is putting this child in permanent, perpetual jeopardy.
All right. Turn off your mic. Sir, um, the twenty million we're talking about, or the five million, what does that for?
It's to assist in the treatment of the eye.
I, I thought also, eh, you said that they said seven hundred dollars will do what?
Yeah, that was in anticipation of getting visa for them to travel down.
Oh, this, the seven hundred dollars to do what?
Oh, seven hundred dollars. Yeah, that's, that's what we got from the assessment of the.
Which, which countries, sir?
It's, eh, in, in India. India. I, I go to U S for treatment, I meet Indians, there is, it sounds very strange when you talk of India. It's the same as fast.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not deliberating.
Yes, sir.
India, they are very good in, in medicine.
Yeah.
We will do that. That's some recent evidence. That's seven hundred dollars. Sir, how much you think these glasses cost?
This, my, one point eight million.
No, in dollars.
No, in dollars?
I don't, I've lost.
One point eight million?
Naira now, dollars, it's over seven hundred.
Sir?
Sir, I'm aware.
No, it's over seven hundred dollars.
So you're not telling me that after treating this child, he will not need glasses? He will need glasses?
Sir?
No, he will need glasses. So he will need glasses. Are you telling me that a child going to surgery in the US or India or Dubai or even Nigeria, that the cost of it is seven hundred dollars?
It can still be a combination, whatever it is, whatever it is. I don't want to be like you.
Anyway, I'm not going to, I'm not going to really go into, because I'm not the medical doctor that does such surgery. But I can tell you that.
I would like to say something, sir.
I would like to say something, but I'm still talking. But to say there are seven hundred dollars to do that surgery, it's not something that I would say is not, is not possible.
I'll send the documents.
It's impossible. No, no, that document, that doctor, she resides in this context.
No, no.
That's not pushing.
The case is very emotional.
It's not by emotions, it's not by emotions. It's about us, no, sir. It's about us that have also treated ourselves and words and relatives. It's about us that pay money to buy glasses. It's about us that, that have sought medical treatments home and abroad.
Yes.
Do you understand, sir?
Distinctive, I, I foundations, I did this category, one point six million.
That's just category?
Yes.
Okay, one point six million, sir. They told me in dollars, in dollars, how much is that?
That would be about one hundred, eh, one thousand dollars?
Every one only seven hundred dollars.
Just a moment, sir.
So just a minute.
Districted chairman, just a moment. Somebody said, why will you go to First Foundation? Go to City Gates here, China is there. I did three fifty, it was zero.
Oh, wait, excuse me, sir.
No, no, it's okay, no, it's.
Thirty, thirty fifty.
Alright, that's it. Eh, doctor, let me hear you.
Districted chairman, member of the Honorable House. Uh, I, from where we came before this, I, I think like when it was reported, I went to the House of Red. Because it was covered, the weight is covered today with this blue plastic. I know. My condolences to the dead and my sympathy to the family. In our profession, empathy is our watchword, because we always want help. In Latin, it says serenum serum, it means do no harm.
Are you a night doctor?
No, I'm a general surgeon, sir.
You are not a night doctor?
No, sir. But we go through the hopeless.
You're not a night doctor?
No, sir.
I just want to be sure that you are not a night doctor.
I'm not a night doctor. So we went to the house, to the clinic, the National Assembly Clinic, and it all, because when I saw the eye affairs, we had to remove the plastic that was covering, and we saw what was there. So they said they cannot, they don't have the capacity to handle, and then he suggested that we fed us to skipper.
Do we have a night doctor in National Assembly?
Yes.
Doctor Arno?
Doctor Arno, sir. So when we went to skipper, we saw the specialist, the foreign trade specialist who was there, he said he come on invitation. He gone through the eye and he said, okay, this is what it is, it was a laceration that was, it was a laceration that was sutured. And he made his diagnosis that it's a coma. So from the diagnosis, he said, he said, okay, they have a specialist who is a pediatrician. A retina specialist who can come and check like the eye, that is not your problem. They did once an appointment for two weeks. I think it took it for only fourteen, because like I ensured and I asked exhaustive questions. In the professional, as he's a specialist in another specialist, and he said, okay, there is no problem. And most of the medications that were given from the other eye clinics that they attended to, he asked to be stopped. And he just said they should use the ointment of etopin. That due to the laceration, the injury, that it seems as if like it is having like addition. And maybe when you take like this, it's going to, it might release, and they have a recheck. So I think when I went there, I even asked them, like, they said, most of these problems are self-releving. About like the eye pathology that is there, as they grow, the body tends to adapt. But that is not what, because we are more interested in what to do, how to ensure that the eyesight is not lost. With your permission, sir, I'm not trying to maybe make the family, the mother, maybe make them feel bad. Make it look as if, okay, we are trying to look for solutions, but I'm digging, I can take off the, I can take off the plastic goodies on top. The eyes are clear, it's just like it's caring, it's car formation, if I do a formation on the corner. That is what is there, which, and they said, okay, if maybe because of the nature of the issue that they want to do a corner transplant, that they take the corner, they replace the corner, so that that place, it's almost as if like if I had this car on my hand, I can, it looks a little bit foggy, and I take this car off. And so we are looking for the best for the child. That is why we are interested. On the fourteenth, I was in the hospital, from eight o'clock to three o'clock before I left the hospital. In anticipation that they are going to be there and in the wait, that they were going to come. If we are not interested, we will not do extensive measures.
Alright, um, sorry, sir, my. Doctor, when you are explaining the issue, was that because you could not secure a visa for them? But you saw that it could be easily done in Nigeria. That was why you refused to seek the visa for them? Is that correct?
Sorry, sir, it wasn't in the effort that because we are trying to cut corners. That is why we decide to go further. They've gone to several hospitals, which made their recommendation, and the.
How far away? All of that was for first read, to ensure that the situation does not degenerate until it gets to the destination where the doctors have recommended. And for you to ensure that the proper visa was given or recommendation was given to them to ensure that they obtain the visa for one year, no matter the circumstance, that you have not been able to secure a visa for this family. Is that correct?
Very correct, sir.
Why should it be so?
Very correct. You know the visa procedure, sir. They don't obviously don't, they have, they have been with the ambassador the visa. Believe me, sir, the presidency, making of years, can support us and we will get the visa. We're still willing. We're still willing.
The committee, yes, I know. Remember, sir, the problem all along has been this mass city beside me here. In the one way nor the politics, they are showing into this house today that he has no humanity for this particular case. In fact, his doctor, who is not an eye specialist, told a very annoying story, that the injury is self-healing. That it should grow with it. Let me shoot him and let him grow with injury, without seeking American attention.
That's not it.
How can they do that, as long as I say, injury that was effected for international attention? It's self, it's self-healing, that he grows up to heal. Will a cut on my hand not be treated to avoid infection? It just a cut, and the injury to the eye is self-healing, and it claimed to be a doctor. I think it's great, it's a big, you need to be sophisticated. For that, it's very important.
You always have to keep it quiet. All this drama you are having.
You always have to keep it.
That's the lawyer. And that's fair, yes, the lawyer.
You don't understand it. You don't understand it. I don't know where, I don't know what you're talking. You don't understand it. You don't understand it, please. So, um, you said assisting the family with twenty million naira? What circumstance, what were you trying to address with the twenty million?
The treatment of the eye.
Who gave you the cost?
I just told the committee.
No, I just want to know, because for clarity and understanding, how did you arrive at the twenty million?
The twenty million wasn't just for this fight. It was actually because they said they would love to leave the area where they are now. So, okay, we'll be able to give you that twenty-five million. If you subject this innocent boy to this treatment, skipper in Asokoro here, the other officials of this committee, they would treat this eye like in grace of God, with less than five million.
I think, I think, I think that recommendations should not come from politicians.
No, okay, because this is I am believing politics. This is not politics.
No, 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 no. That recommendation, that go to social places and change your eye.
No, it came from your doctor, the one.
From which, whose doctor?
This, you know, I was there, I was there myself, the committee chair, Honorable Etaba, the committee chair, was there. He said, no, the people would trust and follow you. And we said, okay, let's try skipper, because we tried the others, and we got to skipper. And somehow, I think, you know, I do, I do, let me leave it as it is, and you can arrive at your.
Alright.
The inside is coming from Nigeria.
Yeah. But thank you very much, um, so we are concentrated on delivering.
Yes.
Right? That's why we are sticked up. There is a child that is under six feet. There's a child that is under six feet. And I'm speaking here as a parent, and I'm sure well he has parents. Only God knows what it does to that child's baby. What it would have come, would have done, but that has taken away from the child, from the family, and from the fam, and from those associated with that. I don't want to go into whether that twenty million is also the compensation for the dead child. Or that is an accident that should be forgotten, I don't even know if that has been discussed or not discussed. But I'm not going to, I'm not going to conclude on this case today. Eh, the, the organ, your, your god needs to make a statement like this. I think this is beyond all of us in that. I don't think I can make that decision for him. I don't think I can make that decision for him. And I think this is very, for me, it's a very serious matter. Where we have lost a child, and one eye is in the balance. And we are talking about, in my opinion, pennies, seven hundred dollars, twenty million naira for the eye. It's not something we should not discuss. I believe that NDLA should, should have a serious rethink. Should have a very serious rethink. Because I always say, let's put, let me wear the other person's shoes and see how it feels. And as I sit here, I'm asking myself, should this be my child for sixteen months? Would I not do everything possible for this child to be treated anywhere in the world? Should I be my own child? And I'm asking the same question. If that child were to be your own, I'm very sure by now the issue would have been settled.
It will have been settled?
Yes.
So we are taking to a professional.
Anywhere in the world, yes. Anywhere in the world. But the issue is not settled here, because it's still being seen as an administrative thing. Still being seen as administrative. And I understand the reason why they brought the case here, because if you care to go to court, it might take another three, four, five years. That's probably why they're here. But if we were to go to court, you would be talking about twenty million. I don't see any judge who will sit down on a case like this and be talking about twenty million. I'm glad the trial lawyer, thirty years, I was admitted in nineteen eighty-five. And I practiced in New York City. That's what we're talking about, New York, New York, New York. I mean, America, I just tell by the listening, where seven hundred dollars to do this in America, I don't know.
Not in America?
I have that experience, and so I don't know.
It's you?
Probably could be done in India, I don't know. I never lived in India, I never did anything in India, so I don't know. But in Nigeria as well, I don't even think that seven hundred dollars would do it. But in any case, I'm not, I'm not an eye doctor, an eye specialist, so I can't come to such a conclusion. But I have my hands here, a child that is under six feet, gone forever, and I have another one whose eye is in the balance. The parents just said that they are tired of this back and forth, and so they want to take their destiny in their own hands. And therefore, they want to seek for their own treatment. NDLA cannot escape themselves from culpability. They are capable of this, that has only been disputed. That is clear. And so how do we come to the decision as to how to move on? Which is why I said that it would take the DJ, is it, is that the DJ? Chairman of NDLA to sit down on this matter. The chairman of NDLA has to sit down on this matter. And so for that reason, we are going to invite the chairman of NDLA to appear before this committee in the next sitting. And to please come with whatever it is you want to come with to convince this committee, why we will not take this strong contract. And so, that will be the chance for me to, and my, the club of the secretary, I will communicate to you, sir, to the chairman, on the decision that would need him to come. And we're going to ask the foundation to come again. Do you live in Abuja?
We live in the town.
So when you come, where do you stay in hotel?
Yes, sir.
How do you come here? Do you fly or you come by road?
We fly there.
How many, how many trips have we made to Abuja already?
Made, well, five trips.
But we are trying to, to make sure that we don't make many more trips. So, sir, the committee has requested that the chairman of NDLA to appear before us and the next sitting date would be communicated to, to you, um, so that this case can be discussed and be put to rest. Thank you, sir. It is so, it's. How are you? Do you have one more?
One more.
Start with your permissions, sir. You will take that.
Yes, please.
The next case here is a matter between Obam and Revol, Oger Eteb, on behalf of Osume, Ojaro, family leaders. To try mining, this is best, cannot be done. The Obam is here?
The Obam here?
Yes, sir.
Please.
To try mining success.
Districted chairman of the committee, who is this, sir? High, Obam, Oger Eteb, Fund, Lu, Stony, and Fairland. They have been there as a year before. The evidence I share here for this distinguished committee state the truth. The whole truth, nothing. Nothing is the truth.
Good evening, distinguished chairman of the committee. My name is, my name is Chidjiki, my name is Anna, I am attorney.
And you are who?
An attorney, I am a lawyer.
For, for who is your name? That's for the Obon.
Yes, sir.
You are the Obon, right?
I am the Obon.
You are the?
I am the lawyer of Opeton Fons.
Okay, so he's a lawyer.
Yes, sir.
So you are here on behalf of Suara, come please.
Osama Ujaro family.
Okay, please sit down. Have you taken your oath, sir?
Yes, sir. Hi, Chidjiki, I am who's only a friend. That evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth, so just in God. I speak of the mining of the retired mining. I do so so that we have learned that evidence I share give all the evidence to the committee shall be the truth. The whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Who's that?
Delivering. The distinguished senator, the chairman of this committee and other members, sir. I am Chief Okun Udofia Okun. I, Okun Udofia Okun, who's on this way. Who's only a friend that the evidence I shall give before this distinguished committee shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. So who who do you represent? Retired mining. And and you, sir?
I'm representing the paramountler of Ibono Lu government area.
Of?
Ibono Lu government area, sir.
So, sir, what's your position with, what's what's your title? For retired mining?
The mining engineer, sir.
Sir?
Mining engineer, sir.
The mining engineer.
Yes, sir.
Are you, are you a representative?
Yes, sir.
So are you a presenter?
Actually, the the invitation was very, came late and received later on twenty six. Uh, which was a tryst day. So my chairman now beckoned me to.
Who's the chairman? Mr. Who?
Mister Mister Zen.
Mister Zen. Okay, so we asked you for the presentation.
Yes.
You say in Chinese?
No, Chinese, sir.
Chinese. Can you take the issue for?
No, sir.
And for the company?
No, no, sir. He just said that she would come here to present or represent him. Why we, why we know that, because the matter is coming for the first time and getting the letter out, so he said he's been supposed to be, not be able to be happy.
Alright, sir. Uh, sir, so in what capacity are you here?
Distinguished chairman, I'm here under the capacity of the community.
What's the community?
Ibono Lu government area, representing the paramountler of the area. And the community is.
What, Ibono, tell the Ibono for him.
I, B, G, and O.
I, B, G, and O.
Yeah, that retired mining.
Community.
Yeah, that retired mining is operating, sir.
Okay. Where's your chairman president?
He's in Abuja.
He's in Abuja. And you think we are in London. We are inviting him to London Court or Congress. Where did you come from?
I, I.
You came from Abuja?
No, I was in Abuja at the time the letter came to.
Um, sir, what's what's the living game? Bill or?
No, I don't know.
Chief Okun Udofia Okun. Ibona Plan Council Secretary.
Chief Okun.
Udofia Okun.
And who? The secretary?
Yeah, Ibona Plan Council Secretary, sir.
The damn fan. Fan secretary. You have Mister Bealu?
Yes, sir.
Mister Bealu. Mining engineer. Sir, what's your name?
My name is Obon Okun Etemm Fon.
What is it?
Okun Etemm Fon.
Obon?
Etemm, E, T, I, M.
Obon?
Fon, M, F, O, N.
M, F?
M, F, O, N, Fon.
Okay. And you are?
I'm the family head of Osama Ujaro.
Family leader.
Of Osama Ujaro.
Obon Fon.
Osama Ujaro. Osama, as in.
Okay, O S U I G.
Yes. Ujaro, U, T, I, A, R, U, K.
So what's the relationship of of the Obon? Of, uh, Osama Ujaro to to the mining? Are you also? What's the relationship with the mining?
I'm I'm the family of that family.
And is is that, is is, um?
The company is operating in Abilish.
In Abilish?
In Abilish, Abilish. I'm not the owner of the village.
Okay, in Abilish.
Yes, in Abilish.
In Osama Ujaro village.
At Abilish.
So by the star, Chidjiki. Chidjiki?
Yes, and Anna. Then A and H.
Okay, representing. Some. Check. Alright, so tell us what's going on, why are you here?
Why I am here, sir? It's me, chairman. I'm here on the ground that the entire company operating in Abilish for the past one and a half years. Operating illegally. What I mean by illegally. By my own experience as a former lawmaker at the local government level. Before any company is doing any essential production. You know, the E I A. Published in the national database. Must be a moral understanding between the company and the committee.
And there's some such thing?
There are no such.
Don't you agree for over one year?
Over one year.
Have you made an attempt to to risk?
Certainly, I have involved the culture of police. I've involved the director of S S S in New York, Abuja City. This has been with that. I've trained the culture for internal security. The immediate past government chairman. All are pushed them. People will not affect to them. The same way they are going to be discouraged. They'll be using happy. Or they could do that job. I have sent a pictorial evidence of what they are doing in my community, in our community. To this honour committee.
Alright. Thank you, turn off the light. Sir, you you had it.
Yes, sir.
What do you have, what do you have to say? Can you speak for your company? You can't speak, I understand that. Can you speak for your company?
I just want to.
Are you speaker for your company?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Sir, I want to, with the, the chairman, sir. I, the first thing is that I, the company, I joined the company and to to the extent that I know most of the information which related to mine, I'm mining in Kenya. And the procedure you have mentioned is rightly, is on top spot. The company are the initiator when the company come to the, to Ibono. The company generally did a consultation with the paramountler. Wait the paramountler made the company understand that there are councils of leaders within their domain. Which for, there are, there are areas of locations for them because the interest of this particular mining for within the coastal line. The the Atlantic Ocean, the coastal for that are shared with Abuja. That's where the mining activity is. And the the company seek the indulgence of the paramountler, the the chief. And with other council member, with the secretaries here. My, my, my chairman, the chairman of the company said I should just represent to present the line, the line, the mining procedures. That's why I said I should part of us speak. So that the, and he sends, he he had to, maybe when he sent the letter, he consulted the community leader in town. That's why they send the secretary in order to put a clear fit to community related activities with the company in Africa. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. I'm here. As directed by the paramountler of Ibona Lu government area. When the retired mining informed him of the petition written by Obon Obon Etemm against the company. I would have come here with a presentation from the plan council to clarify but to help the committee to take proper decisions concerning the petition. Therefore, what I can say here is that the operation of retired mining in Ibona Lu government area is known in Obon Okun Etemm's village. Where retired mining is operating is a different place, Obon Okun Etemm is an indigenous of Nupanap village in Ibona Ibono. As a local government is made up of twenty six designated villages. And the operation of retired mining is not in all the twenty six designated villages. So it is those villages that retired mining, like you mentioned, M O U and so on. There are a lot of things, since the mining is not done in his community. So it's not aware whether they retired in where they are mining, whether there is this or they have done M O U or they have not done M O U. As we are speaking now, I'm very much aware that retired have done M O U to the community that they operate. And I've even started.
Do you have a copy of it?
Hello, sir.
Do you have a copy of the M O U?
No, I don't have, that is what I mean, because of the short notice, I don't have it here.
Alright, sir.
I can even attest to the fact that even retired have started executing community projects.
Okay, sir. This is what we're going to do. I need the chairman. Bealu? I need the chairman. Alright? So so far, I've I've heard primarily what what I think is happening. And I don't want, I want the chairman to speak to it. I need the documents that is going to be first to help with, uh, decision, which should come with that. The M O Us and all that I spoke about. Sir. You hear what he said, he said retired mining, it's not, it's not your village. I don't know, I don't know your villages, so I don't know how, whether he's right or wrong. But we're going to adjourn this case. Because those who can speak to me, especially the chairman of the government. And you're already here. You don't have records of M O U. So it's not want to just say there's M O U. And you say there's none. And your village says it's not so. We're going to adjourn this case. So I have every party properly represented. So I can hear the matter thoroughly. To begin to talk about it here and there now, it's it still will help us in that matter decision. And so for that reason, we're going to adjourn this case. And Mister Bealu, please convey to your chairman that we need him. He needs to appear in the next appearance. And for your community, the the paramountler has sent you, hopefully you'll send it back. With the right documents, you will address your position. And whatever documents perhaps are, we hope that you bring in next hearing. Yes, can I say something? Why? I just want to add up this before the next hearing. So that the committee can really like, I passed around a particular document. This claim, yeah, I think, trying to show the extent of which they are disobedience to a lot of, I don't want to say fraud, but if I say fraud, it's acceptable. If this this particular company is calling the Chinese government. If you see the documents of this particular, if you have it there. There there's fraudulent use of the same three names as landowners and then the paramountler in acquiring over fifteen or sixteen different sites. Covering over, what, ten thousand acres, acres of land. So that's why we need you here. That's why we need you here. To carry on, get to represent the paramountler.
Yes, sir.
And issue whatever documents we have, to please come with that. So this case cannot adjourn. I'd have to associate the alternatives of the case. This is the thing, this is adjusting the against.